It's a doofal kid.
It's... There's not a lot of changes.
Not just so clear.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. It is 9:30. My name is Mike Kelly. I'm the chairman of the Johnson County Board of Commissioners. I'd like to welcome you to today's meeting of the board. It is Thursday, June 22, 2023. I'd ask the clerk to please call the role of elected officials.
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Here.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick here.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Here.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
And Chairman Kelly.
I'm here. All are present. Would you all mind please standing and joining us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you all so much for being here today. If you all, please don't mind joining me in checking your cell phone or other noise-making devices that you may have on you and making sure that those are on silent. We'd sure appreciate it. At this time, I'm going to ask the folks from the Johnson County Suicide Prevention Coalition to join me at the dais for a recognition. Well, it is always my great pleasure to be the cheerleader for Johnson County's success. And today I have another one of those opportunities. It's my pleasure to recognize Shayna Burgess and Carrie Spain. Shayna is the Director of Prevention and Community Relations for the Johnson County Mental Health Center. And Carrie is the Chair of the Johnson County Suicide Prevention Coalition. This coalition was recently recognized with an important national accolade, the National Association of Counties Achievement Award. They... This recognizes the unique work of this group, which was formed in 2012 when more than 150 community partners gathered for a suicide prevention summit to discuss the rising rates of suicide in the community. And has grown to more than 400 community members representing a diverse cross-section of our community. They've done important work to reduce the stigma and to encourage connections to care for those in Johnson County. And I just want to mention two particular projects that are, I think, very notable. The first is that they have helped improving access to and knowledge of the crisis line in Johnson County, which now fields more than 44,000 calls each year. Additionally, they've helped distribute more than 15,000 gun locks, recognizing that firearms are used in half of all deaths by suicide in Johnson County. So they're doing amazing work. It's my pleasure to recognize them, and I ask all of Johnson County to join me in thanking them for continued service. Shayna, the floor is yours. Thank you.
Sure, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. You know, this is such important work, and we are so thankful for the community members that rally around us based on their passion for the work in order to provide individuals hope and resources when they have thoughts of suicide and make sure they know who they can reach out to and what resources are available in our community. So what a great example of a collective impact of people from different organizations and come together for different reasons, you know, both personal and professional, of why this is very, very important to them. I'll tell one other story just because I like to share some of those direct impacts of the coalition. So we partnered with local businesses, have a postcard restaurants, different establishments can have. It says, "The average person tells four lies a day. The most common one, 'I'm fine.'" No matter what you're going through, you don't have to do it alone and has the numbers for our crisis line. We received feedback from a private practitioner, a therapist in the community, that someone that they were serving was at one of these establishments, saw this resource, connected with the crisis line, and got the help that they needed in real time. So that's just one example. You know, in prevention work, we don't always know how many people we impact in what way. And it's really nice when we can hear those stories that we are truly making a difference. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Carrie Spain with Children's Mercy, who is our current Chair of the Coalition, to share just a bit more.
On behalf of the Coalition, I just want to thank everybody for this award and this recognition. This work is the passion of a group of individuals who are committed to making sure that our community is aware of this important issue and passionate about spreading the word, spreading resources, supporting one another. This is challenging work. So I want to thank everybody for this and want to encourage everyone to continue to spread the word, make sure that people know the help and resources are available. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, we're going to turn to our public comment portion of the meeting. This is the portion of time where if you choose to speak on an item related to county business that's not later on the agenda, we invite you to so speak. If you want to speak on an action item, we ask that you register for that particular action item. If you do happen to go and speak on an action item during this general public comment session, we'll ask that you refrain from those comments at this time. When you do come to the dais, we ask you state your name and the city in which you reside. We ask that comments be limited to two minutes. There's going to be a clock that appears to help you with that. If you happen to go beyond that time limit, we'll ask you to conclude your comments. We ask that members refrain from comments that are offensive or impertinent or profane or slanderous. And please refrain from the use of indecorous language. If we happen to veer into that territory, we'll ask that you refrain. If it continues, we'll ask that you step aside from the dais. At this time, we'll ask the clerk to prepare us for the public comment.
Chair, we're ready.
All right, very good. We'll start on the, no notes for the record today. We'll start on the business session and ask if there's a motion for the consent agenda. Commissioner Allen Brand.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as written.
So moved by Allen Brand, seconded by Hanslick. I'd ask the clerk to call the
roll in the consent agenda.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
And Chairman Kelly.
Aye. Seven votes in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
That's correct.
Very good. Item number two is the June 1st, 2023 Business Session Minutes. Commissioner Ashcraft will abstain. Is there a motion to approve these minutes? Commissioner Allen Brand?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the June 1, 2023 Business Session Minutes.
Hanslick, second.
So moved by Commissioner Allen Brand and seconded by Commissioner Hanslick. Seeing no questions or comments, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Abstain.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
And Chairman Kelly.
Aye. I have six votes in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
That is correct.
Thank you very much. The minutes are approved. Onto Resolution Number 042-23 and 043-23. This is an application for rezoning preliminary and final plat, which will serve as the preliminary and final development plans and some plat exceptions for an area located in Commissioner Allen Brand's district. Michelle Leininger is here. Welcome back. Thanks for your report last week on these properties. Anything further you'd like to add?
Good morning, Michelle Leininger, County Planning Staff. I have no additional information to add.
All right, very good. Commissioner Allen Brand, questions, comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair, just to let you know, this went through planning and zoning and no one contested it, and I do have two motions. And just to be completely transparent, I have no relatives or no relative that owns this company any longer.
Very good. Seeing no questions at this time, would you like to make the first motion, please?
Thank you, Chair. I move to adopt Resolution Number 042-23, which approves a rezoning from P R U I B and R U R districts to P R U I, oh, is that a one?
It's a one.
It's a one, thank you, sorry. P R U 1B district for the reasons set forth in this resolution.
Hanslick, second.
Moved by Commissioner Allen Brand and seconded by Commissioner Hanslick. Seeing no questions on that first motion, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
And Chairman Kelly.
Aye. We have seven votes in favor and none against. And Commissioner Allen Brand, would you like to go ahead with the second motion, please?
Thank you, Chair. I move to adopt Resolution Number 043-23, which approves a preliminary final plat, which shall serve as a preliminary and final development plans, seven plat exceptions, plat exception authorization number 06-22-23, and one waiver from approving Gardner East Road to a Type B Collector Street and three-lot residential subdivision to be known as Steel Waters for the reasons and subject to the stipulations set forth in this resolution.
Hanslick, second.
Moved by Commissioner Allen Brand and seconded by Commissioner Hanslick. Just to be clear for the record, this approves a preliminary and final plat. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
And Chairman Kelly.
Aye. I have seven votes in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
That's correct.
All right, very good. Let's move on then to item number four, which is a request for a final plat for 12 residential lots to be known as Mulberry Hill Estates on approximately 27 acres. This is located on the northeast corner of Gardner Road and 151st Street. This is in Commissioner Allen Brand's district. Ms. Leininger, thank you again for this report at Agenda Review last week. Anything further you'd like to add?
Good morning, Michelle Leiniger, County Planning Staff. I have no additional information to add.
Commissioner Allen Brand?
Again, Mr. Chair, this is all in order with all the approvals and no one contested, so when you're ready, I have a motion.
Please go ahead.
I move to approve final plat for 12 residential lots to be known as Mulberry Hill Estates, second plat for reasons and subject to requirements and recommended by the zoning board.
Hanslick, second.
So moved by Commissioner Allen Brand and seconded by Commissioner Hanslick. Seeing no questions or comments, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
And Chairman Kelly.
Aye. We have seven votes in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
That's correct.
Thank you, Ms. Leininger.
Thank you.
Next, we'll take up Resolution Number 041-23. This is a preliminary plat and final plat and minimum infrastructure waiver for a residential lot to be known as Schweitzer Cove. This is located in Gardner Township in Commissioner Allen Brand's district. Michelle Cricks from Planning, welcome back. Any further comment or report on this request for preliminary and final plat?
Michelle Cricks with Johnson County Planning. And, Mr. Chair, I have nothing further to add from last week's agenda review.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Allen Brand?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, this went through planning and zoning. No one contested, and it's all in good order. And when you're ready, I have a motion.
Go ahead.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 041-23, a preliminary plat and final plat, including a minimal infrastructure waiver not constructed 152nd Street to a Type B Collector Street standard for one residential lot to be known as Schweitzer Cove for the reasons and subject to speculations as requirements recommended by the Southwest Consolidated Zoning Board.
Hanslick, second.
So moved by Commissioner Allen Brand and seconded by Commissioner Hanslick. I'm not seeing any other questions or comments at this time, so I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
And Chairman Kelly.
Aye. I have seven votes in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
That's correct.
Okay, we're going to move on then to number six, which is a request from Van Trust Real Estate for a final development plan for Building B2 at the New Century Commerce Center, located at 165th and Clare Road. Diane Wicklund from Planning is back with us on this item, which is in Commissioner Allen Brand's district. Ms. Wicklund, good morning.
Good morning. Diane Wicklund, Planning Department. I really have no changes or updates from last week's presentations.
Commissioner Allen Brand?
Mr. Chair, this went through the proper channels and no one contested. And when you're ready, I do have a motion.
Okay, we will take that shortly. Commissioner O'Hara, did you have a question?
Yes. I have some concerns about how we proceed with these developments when they come in for industrial revenue bonds. And I just want the rest of the commission to be aware of the email that I received from Aaron Otto, when I asked the question if the county does any financial vetting of the folks who are applying for these industrial revenue bonds. And my concern is, his response was no, and my concern is that we own the underlying property, so this is different than other projects in the county, is that the county owns the underlying property. And it seems to me that it would behoove the commission to consider to require, to make sure that the underlying financial stability of these companies is intact before we grant them the industrial revenue bonds. My concern is, is that the company that we approved $34 million of industrial revenue bonds a couple of weeks ago, that they have only been in business in the United States for a year and a month now. And I also looked at their parent company and at a parent company, same name, same line of products, and they have lost 67.85% of their stock value in the last year, according to the Financial Times. So I'm just concerned, and I just think that that possibly should be an additional step that we put in when we are considering industrial revenue bonds. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Hara. And when we're discussing industrial revenue bonds, I invite you to bring that up. Let's get back to the final development plan. Commissioner Ashcraft?
Well, I was just wondering, what is our exposure? And if you'd like to defer that conversation, we can. But the point being, in circumstances like this, I thought we were shielded from that exposure, but I could be wrong.
I appreciate the comment, and we can allow Aaron Otto to address this just briefly if he should so choose. But again, we're focusing on this development plan for Building B2. And given the amount of information and items on today's agenda, let's try to keep our conversation limited to the item at hand. Mr. Otto, is there anything in particular you'd like to address briefly?
What I would say is that the industrial revenues bonds, as everybody knows, are bonds that are typically bought by the issuer, so there's no financial liability back to the county on the RVs. As with other ground rents at New Century, if the ground lease is surrendered, then the property on the ground lease becomes the property of the county. And so that's similar to what might happen here in that situation, but it's not dissimilar from the models been used for the last 50-plus years at New Century, or Executive Airport for that matter. We had a hangar or a commercial building.
Thank you, Mr. Otto. Commissioner Allen Brand, how about the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to adopt Resolution Number 044-23, which approves the request for a final development plan for Building B2 for the New Century Commerce Center East Area Plan for the reasons and subject to speculation set forth in this resolution.
Myers, second.
So moved by Commissioner Allen Brand and seconded by Commissioner Myers. Commissioner O'Hara, a question on the development plan?
Just a comment on Mr. Otto's comments. This would be similar to the problem that we have with the North Supply Building, the 470,000-square-foot office building that is costing the county approximately $1.5 million a year, if it would come back to the county. I'm just asking that we consider having one more step in the process. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know that there's any response that we need.
They are actually very different situations. The county has owned the New Century Office Building since the day it was built, and this is a case where that is not the situation. But we've had a building and ground lease in place, approved by the Board of County Commissioners, back, I think, in 1980 for that building. So there's a pretty fundamental difference between those two structures.
I appreciate that note. Commissioner Allen Brand, any questions or comments on the development?
Mr. Chair, I just would like to make a comment that, you know, there was a study that was prepared, and all of us were on the commission at that time to review that building and possibly moving some of our leased buildings into that building. And we all, the vote was chosen not to do that. So we have had other options, so I just want to make that comment.
I appreciate that, Commissioner Allen Brand. And I think we're going down a path not related to this development plan for Building B2, and so I'd like to bring us back to the surface and ask that we call the question as it relates to the development plan for Building B2, of which I am in full support, seconded by Commissioner Hanslick, and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
And Chairman Kelly.
Aye. I have seven votes in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
That's correct.
Very good. Next is Resolution Number 048-23, and this is amendments to the Johnson County Rural Comprehensive Plan, as well as updates and changes regarding the policy area map and the county's area plans, including the 1998 Sunflower Army Ammunition Plant Concept Plan. Jay Leipzig from Planning and Diane Wicklund are here to provide us with any additional context or answers after their, excuse me, their presentation last week in several open houses on the topic. Mr. Leipzig, anything you'd like to say off the top?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Jay Leipzig, the Planning Housing and Development Director. Just a couple of things to note. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this item May 23rd. It was unanimously approved before that body. There was a subcommittee that started reviewing this topic in October of 2022, then finished up their work in February 23rd. This is an amendment to the county's Rural Comprehensive Plan regarding the 1998 area plan. I believe it was called the Community in the Park. The planning area is located in the northwest area of the unincorporated part of Johnson County. No road improvements are proposed with this plan update. It's a future land use map, or future land use update only, and that other studies dealing with infrastructure or carnet will be addressed with future plan updates.
Thank you very much, Mr. Leipzig. I'm going to ask you to step aside. We do have some public comments on this particular one. Thank you very much. Ask the clerk to let us know when we're ready for those public comments.
Chair, we're ready.
Very good. First is Debbie Detmer.
Hi, I'm Debbie Detmer of Shawnee. At the first meeting, the planning staff greatly underestimated the concern of the residents in the area. The room was too small for the crowd. There was not nearly enough handouts for the attendees. They divided the group into two parts, ran through their speeches, and then booted everyone out the doors. Questions, some very pointed about the subcommittees, were asked. Staff gave vague answers, and there was not enough availability of information. They ushered in the second half of the group. No handouts available for them at all. Surely Allen Brand was there, but she stayed in the back of the room. My take on the large turnout and the concern is this. I feel it is based on how these people who live near the ammo plant are not trusting the county, the planning, and the B O C C to make decisions in their best interest. They don't feel they've been heard. With their concerns in previous dealings and want to stay involved, the county slipped this battery plant into the area, and they are concerned about what is next. The concern is the proposed change in the Edgerton Road in two lanes to four lanes with grade separations at several intersections. This will handle traffic in and out of the battery plant to the inner module and/or I-35. There was a second meeting, and that will be addressed, and I'm not sure the third has even been done at all. You have to listen to the people. You have to hear what they have to say about this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Jeff Harkness.
Jeff Harkness, OP, Chair, Commissioners. Not too long ago, there was talk about giving the ammunition plant back, which was about the same time we got rid of the import-export. It was on the chopping block, too. I wonder how Congressman Yoder's doing. Anyway, you would think in this cancel culture, as we move away from the U.S. military-industrial complex, more towards the Space Force, that they would have not cut national defense because these monies would have expedited these repair areas, you know, these old World War II zones quicker, you know, for getting away from that culture. But, you know, I've always thought if we would have had back-to-back presidential terms of Senator Dole and Jack Kemp, we wouldn't be in this trouble right now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, I have Galene Van Horn.
Galene Van Horn, Lenexa. I attended the second public meeting at the DeSoto High School regarding the Sunflower Army Ammunition Plant, and I believe a name change is underway, maybe possibly to Ad Astra. Citizens requested a public meeting at that time that included the city of DeSoto, the state, and the planning board to better understand traffic patterns and how roads would change. There was some really conflicting information there. The presenters at the public meeting offered minimal insight to these road changes, which are very important to the people in that area. Citizens requested and were told a meeting, including the three entities, the state, the city of DeSoto, and the planning board, might happen this summer. Has this meeting occurred? If it hasn't occurred, it seems impossible to vote on this resolution. Tax-paying citizens deserve to clearly understand what is happening to their property and their livelihoods. Again, I ask you, are you leading this county with your highest degree of integrity?
Thank you, Ms. Van Horn. And I'm going to invite Jay back, as well as Diane. Jay, can you give us, from a high level, I think, one of the questions that folks had brought up and that we had discussed during our last agenda review with the change to the future use designation regarding acreage? Can you briefly describe that?
Yes, we have to do that, Mr. Chairman. I'm Jay Leipzig. This item was previously in a urban fringe area, but when you think about that Community in the Park Plan had a variety of land uses originally that was when it was adopted before. So the, with allowing a further subdivision that we're proposing now in the rural policy area. Because of that, really, the greatest factor there, this is, this is not, we're not changing the zoning. The zoning is still R-U-R. This is the future land use. And the greatest factor there, when we look at, if you think of it almost as a bundle of goods, we look at several different things we do as we do our analysis, the greatest factor there is infrastructure and the availability of infrastructure. So if a proposal should come forward, when the applicant has, has infrastructure into the site, staff would certainly, the only, that is just one component that we look at is the future land use, the R-U-R, but if there's infrastructure there to support it, there's no issues there. It's really with the, the, we're not changing the zoning. All of that is, still remains the same. The other thing I was going to mention is this is just a future land use update. The the meeting that we had, as the speaker mentioned, the first meeting, we were, there was a lot of people there, and so we had to pivot. We ended up having a series of presentations. I think we actually went through it four times that evening.
Yes.
And then we did an additional meeting on April the 19th at the DeSoto High School and answered questions at that particular meeting as well. And then, but we, knowing that that KDOT is working with Department of Public Works to look at new traffic models and traffic modeling data, we're still waiting for that information, so we don't have that information yet. But that is, the goal is to have a larger meeting with with a variety of people with, having represented there from the city of DeSoto, as well as the county and and other representatives, too, in the state.
So just to be clear, and I think you mentioned it several times, but to reiterate to everybody, this is not a rezoning that's occurring by this future land use designation, right?
That is correct, sir.
And that regardless of the future land use designation, there's still an opportunity for application for a request for greater density to these projects, which exist today, right?
Yes, that is correct. It's, one of the factors we look at is that future land use. The other piece that I can show the, in the last slide, sorry, does show the, this is the area map. You can see the the parkland that is also being dedicated. There is a, this, there's about 2,000 acres of parkland, I believe, that will eventually be dedicated over. And so there, there will be about a 2,900-acre park there that will provide a natural buffer around this area as well. There's also, I believe, and I don't know the current acreage, but a proposed solar farm on the southern edge of that, of that area that DeSoto annexed as well. So there's, there's, that will also, hopefully, will encourage a somewhat rural atmosphere, plus with the, with the rural environment, but also with the, the parkland buffer around it on the southern edge.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And a lot of the changes that I have seen in this are, just given the change from DeSoto and Sunflower itself, it's almost just changing maps that no longer are accurate. With the annexation of over a third of the territory by the city of DeSoto, it's just providing accurate depictions. I mean, that's how I noted several of the changes.
Yes, Chairman, that is correct. The Community in the Park Plan that was originally part of this, this area had a variety of land uses. It had some residential, there was commercial, it was also some industrial, and which, which assumed a high level of infrastructure in the area as well. So that's why this, this pivot to, or switch to the, the urban fringe area to the, the rural policy area.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Allenbrand, this is your district.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I want to address several things that was brought up during the presentation, and there has been numerous meetings that have been going on in the community with people that live there in the surrounding area. And part of this is also from hearing what they had to say. And there is a, for everybody else that doesn't live in the area, is it July the 12th, we have another open house that we have partnered up with the city of DeSoto. We've also had ongoing meetings helping with the people that live in an incorporated area, getting broadband there. So we've had those meetings going on as well. I, you know, we've had several meetings, and one meeting that we had, I think it was the second meeting, we had, I thought there was close to about 400 people, and I stood outside to help with that crowd of people because we were limited how many people we could have in the building at that time. And I felt like the staff did an unbelievable job. I was only unable to attend one of the meetings because we had a park and rec meeting. But the staff, I cannot thank you enough. What you have gone through this past three months and even longer, I, I cannot, and I know that other commissioners up here feel the same. You know, this, it's, it's a lot of hard work, and a lot of this is cleanup. It's, you know, making the name. Somebody had mentioned about the name change, and it's true. They, they changed the name to Ad Astra. And so we were trying to clean up and listen to the people that live there. We took names, addresses, phone numbers, made phone calls. And, you know, the, the parkland that Jay was talking about, I attended the Army Corps meeting. I attended two of them. The chairman and the county manager attended the morning one. That parkland is almost 99% clean. And, you know, just so everyone knows here, as the Army Corps does do that cleanup, they'll have different property deeds. So they'll have, you know, is it clean for residential? Is it clean for a business? And it actually will stay with that deed. Just also to let you know, there's almost 14 acres, I think, Joe Connor, for the fire station that's being built there. So there's a lot going on, and I, I'm in fully support of this. I feel like we have, not only myself, but what the staff has done accommodating and trying to get out the word, is just unbelievable. And this next meeting in July is just the first one of more to come with partners with the city of DeSoto.
Thank you.
When you're ready, I have a motion.
We'll come back to you for that motion. Commissioner Hanslick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to also thank Mr. Leipzig. He sat down with, he and his staff, actually, I think we did it by Zoom, but we discussed the, I had had some concerns about the movement from the two-acre minimum lot size to the 10-acre minimum lot size because of concern that, of the need for more density in housing. But, and please correct me if I say this wrong, but in, in better understanding that the problem is there's no infrastructure in those areas, and so it makes sense to have the larger lot sizes. However, as you just stated, if someone does want to have a smaller, more dense development, that is an option, and can be considered on a case-by-case basis. Am I understanding that correctly?
That is correct, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Leipzig, if we maintained the two-acre minimum on the east side of Sunflower, would that impact the actual zoning and use?
It, it wouldn't impact the, that is, the zoning is not being changed. It's not being changed at all. I think, and, and I understand your, your question, Commissioner, if you look at having the, the two-acre as the future land use, the urban fringe versus the 10-acre, it's, the 10-acre is not perfect because there are some cases where there is infrastructure that could support it. The two-acre is almost, I think that is a worse, a worse scenario because that would, that just, it, it's, it opens up too much for development, frankly. And I, I think we, as I said, they, I look at it as a basket of goods, the things we review, and we're not, the zoning is still in place. It's not being changed. Any application would still go before the zoning board for recommendation and before this board for, for final approval. So all of that, it's just, we, we look at it with staff as, as just a basket of goods that we, when we do our golden criteria and we look at that application, we look at all of these actors on, on an individual basis.
A follow-up. Excuse me. So taking this away on the comprehensive plan actually limits the possibility of landowners being able to have two-acre minimums on, on their, the use of their land? Because you just stated that the purpose is, is to keep, keep development at a minimum. And in my opinion, when you keep the development at a minimum, this is simply taking property rights away from the landowners and warehousing the property for much higher density use if and when the city of DeSoto chooses to annex. So anyway, I will have an amendment to this resolution when, when, after the motion is made. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Leipzig, let me make sure that I'm understanding this correctly. It's not that we are precluding anybody who is on a two-acre lot from utilizing that two-acre lot properly through the zoning process or even adding infrastructure there, too. What it is, is setting the, a standard of 10 acres to preclude a lot of two-acre lots or the potential problem that comes with a lack of infrastructure before a lot of development. So this, is that?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Commissioner Allenbrand?
Mr. Chair, you didn't have said it more clearly. And also, Commissioner Hanslick, you know, the comments that you made, because, you know, one of the, there are probably some people that, that are going to want to break up, you know, and they, they had made comments during that night. But you also have to think about, you know, we're trying to protect road infrastructure. We're trying to protect water and electric. And so anybody can come forward, you know, with the plan, but you may be paying for infrastructure as you're doing it. So.
Commissioner Allenbrand, why don't you go ahead with the motion so we can keep this going?
I move the board adopt resolution number 048-23, which approves certain amendments to the Johnson County Rural Comprehensive Plan related to the future land use, updates, and changes regarding policy area map and the county's area plans, including 1998 Sunflower Army Ammunition Plant Concept Plan.
Hanslick, second.
Moved by Commissioner Allenbrand and seconded by Commissioner Hanslick. Commissioner O'Hara, do you want to go ahead?
Yes, I have an amendment. I move the board to amend the Johnson County Rural Plan attached to resolution number 048-23 to reflect a minimum acreage of two acres that are now, are currently in our comprehensive plan for this northwest area.
So moved, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Ashcraft. I appreciate the requested amendment. I'm against it for two reasons. One, based on the recommendations of staff and the comments that we've had previously about the potential problems of development sans infrastructure. Also to reflect the rural character of the area and the current zoning density. But also, this comes at the unanimous approval of our planning commission. And I think that there is an ability that the Western Zoning Board will have to handle issues as they arise to maintain the integrity, but the focus of development in and around this area. Commissioner Allenbrand and Commissioner Ash-
Mr. Chair, I am, I am opposed to this. I feel like it undermines not only the staff, but all the people that live out there and participated in this. And what does it say about our zoning board and our planning board? They were, that, it was anonymous. I mean, I just, I don't, I, I feel like it's undermining. I will not support that.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Leipzig, and all due respect to the chairman, what is the difference between what's proposed in the original amendment, excuse me, the original motion, and the amendment that Commissioner O'Hara is offering? It seems to be, it seems to be looking at the different sides of the same coin from my vantage point. But what, from your professional perspective, what is the difference?
Mr. Ashcraft, Jay Leipzig, the, Commissioner O'Hara is proposing basically the area remain urban fringe, which is a two-acre minimum. And what, what staff is proposing, what the planning commission is proposing, is a 10-acre minimum for future land use. And they, the planning commission did discuss this. They, they discussed that at length in terms of kind of weighing both sides of, of the option, whether, you know, two lots in the urban fringe area or one acre, or one, one residence per 10 acres. But in thinking about it, as I said, the greatest factor was kind of the infrastructure. The infrastructure kind of dictates development or when areas are ripe for development. And that, that really is the primary factor when things are, are reviewed. The zoning is not changed. That would remain the same. It's just our, our future land use classification.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Just trying to understand, regardless of whether or not the amendment passes, it's going to be subject to the property and its capacity to build on it based on infrastructure, and I'm going to add topography?
Yes, Mr. Ashcraft, that is correct.
Okay.
It's one of our, it's a golden factor. We go through that whole item of, I think, what, seven factors or eight factors for review, when we review land use applications.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This adds one more layer of, of challenges for landowner to be able to develop into acre lots. So if it, if it's, if, if this is truly, if the development of this area is truly contingent upon infrastructure, then it doesn't matter if we keep the two acres, which, by the way, the two acres have been there since 1998. And we are taking something from those property owners. They did not understand this. It was not presented clearly at the meeting that I was at. Staff indicated that it would be, in, in private conversations, that it would be very difficult to go for two-acre lots with this in the comprehensive plan. I asked twice on, on that issue. The planning commission was, from staff, I was there, that, that, that this would not impede two-acre developments. So I just, I just want to put this in codified, that the two-acre minimum is in the comprehensive plan and that we are not taking the opportunity for landowners in that area for the highest and best use of their land. It's been like that since 1998. The sky has not fallen. So I just ask that we retain that in our new resolution.
I, I can appreciate that, but I think we also could recognize that there's a significant change to the property since 1998, especially now, given the development and given the opportunities for parkland, et cetera, given the one-third annexation of the land by DeSoto. And so in recognition of those changes, I, I think the planning commission unanimously got it right. And I've appreciated staff's clear presentation and always appreciate the education that I have received. And so thank you. that I have received. And so, thank you all for that. Seeing no other questions on this, let's call the question on the amendment. This is on the amendment.
Commissioner Fast.
It's on the amendment.
Okay.
That's O'Hare.
Sorry, no.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, no.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, no.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand.
Allenbrand, no.
And Chairman Kelly.
No. Two votes in favor and five against. Is that consistent with your count?
That's correct.
Okay. Amendment fails to the resolution as a whole. Commissioner Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Leipzig, Commissioner Allenbrand made reference to this, but I wanted to ask you to make sure there's no, no misunderstanding. Has the public affected by this change or this proposed change been adequately and appropriately notified? And will you so state?
Yes, Commissioner, we have. We had, as I said, the first meeting was held on March 21st. And I will admit, we were, the, the, the size of the building just could not accommodate the number of people that were there. We had, I'd say, at least 200. Commissioner Allenbrand said perhaps 400 people. There's a lot of people there. So, we ended up, we had to pivot and work through in, in small groups. Second meeting on April 19th and the DeSoto High School, at least 100 people there for that one. Same notification process. And then we went through a notification process with the planning commission as well, and then went through the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner O'Hara?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, those were public meetings held. I was at the, the one at the high school in DeSoto that was on April 19th. It was not made clear to the residents the difference of the two acre minimum versus the 10 acre minimum. And this is, this is eroding their property rights, and I will not be supporting this resolution.
We can agree to disagree about the erosion of the property rights. Is there any other questions? We'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the resolution.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
No.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand?
Allenbrand, aye.
And Chairman Kelly.
Aye. I've, six votes in favor, one against. Is that consistent with your count?
That's correct.
Very good. On to Resolution Number WD 23015, which is consideration of funding for a real estate contract for a purchase of a piece of property within the city of Merriam for future uses of Johnson County wastewater wet weather storage site. We have Susan Pekerek from the wastewater department here with us today. Ms. Pekerek, welcome back.
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, Chairman and Commissioner. Susan Pekerek with wastewater. So, this is for the purchase of a property for a future wet weather storage facility. This project was included in our fiscal year 2023 budget. The storage site is part of our integrated plan, and it's scheduled to be conducted in the early 2030s. It saves $10 million when compared to increasing the capacity of the interceptor that takes this flow through the Turkey Creek Sewer System to the Nelson facility. We have a map here that shows you. Here's the proposed future wet weather site, and then this red line represents the interceptor that takes that flow to the Nelson site. So, our total request is for $313,825. It includes the property purchase easement and construction of a sewer line to connect the property owner's property to the sanitary sewer system. And we will utilize our term and supply contractor to construct that sewer line. And wastewater staff will manage that.
Thank you very much.
If there are any questions.
Sorry, didn't mean to speak over you there, but thank you very much for the reminder on this one. I'm going to ask you to step aside really quickly, and I'm going to open a public hearing on this matter. If anybody would like to discuss it, is welcome at this time. Okay, nobody has stepped forward. I'm going to close the public hearing, invite Ms. Pekerek back, and open for questions from the commissioner, starting with Commissioner Fast.
Yes, and thank you. And I know the city of Merriam is in support of this. It's right in their downtown. I mean, was there any feedback? They have a very active downtown business group. Was there any feedback from the head of that business association or any?
I don't, no, I don't think, I don't believe. So, let me see if we have. Well, it's a little hard. So, this is 69th and Farley, and so, it's, it's a little away from that downtown area. And so, this property owner that we've been working with, that, you know, they were looking to, they were willing to work with us to, to sell this property to us. So, yeah, and as you referenced, the city of Merriam's staff's well aware of what we're doing.
The other thing that, the county, I'm on, the liaison to the SMAC committee been working on this for years. When I worked for Congressman Moore and Congresswoman Davis has been working on the Turkey Creek and the, and all the changes for stormwater to get downtown Merriam out of the flood zone. Can you talk about, would this kind of connect with stormwater and managing stormwater? Because, you know, there are shared systems with storm and sewer. I mean, will that help some with the flooding?
Yeah. Well, what I, what I can say, so, we have a separate sanitary sewer system. But particularly in your district, as you know, we, we discuss how as our system ages, there is wet weather. When it rains, we'll get into our sanitary sewer system. And so, being able to provide this storage facility will help, help us, you know, store that wet weather flow until the storm has decided, and then we can transport that to the Nelson's facility to treat it. I know my staff works very closely with the public work staff on the stormwater projects. This site is really ideal because it's out of the floodplain, and we'll be able to, be able to accomplish what we need to accomplish. And again, not having to upsize that red line that you see on this map. We won't have to, to upsize that. We'll be able to utilize that storage facility instead. So, that will save us dollars in the future. I hope that helps answer your question.
No, thank you.
Okay.
Sounds like really another great addition to Merriam to control stormwater flooding.
Yeah.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Pekerek, a clarification, building on Commissioner Fast's question. Do we still have intentionally shared systems between wastewater and stormwater?
We do not within the Johnson County wastewater system.
Okay. I didn't, I didn't think so because you usually rail against I and I, and I just wanted to make sure I understood that correctly.
Thank you.
Question about, you did use the term supply contract. How was, we denman, if I'm spelling that?
I think it's pronounced Wydenman, but I-
Wydenman. How were they selected?
So, we issued a request for proposals, and we reviewed those proposals. And so, they were selected and the contract was awarded back in 2019. As part of that contract, they provided unit prices for, you know, work of this type. So, so we're utilizing, this is based on a quote they provided us, and we're utilizing those unit prices as part of their contract. And our staff will oversee that work as they, as they conduct it.
Very good. Mr. Chairman, I often rail against the use of term and supply contracts, but I, I just wanted to point out, they do have a utility particularly on comparatively small projects like this. The, the cost of trying to go through a bidding process and the time it costs is, is not conducive to, to good management. So, I have no objections.
Thank you.
I appreciate that and recognize your hesitance for term and supply, but I agree that it is in order here. Go ahead, Commissioner Fast.
I move the board adopt Resolution Number WD 23-015, authorizing funding in the amount of $313,825, and authorize the chairman to execute the proposed real estate sale contract for the purchase of property within the city of Merriam for future use as a Johnson County wastewater wet weather storage site and any other documents required for the authorized purchase.
Myers, second. Moved by Commissioner Fast and seconded by Commissioner Myers. Seeing no further questions, would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand?
Allenbrand, aye.
And Chairman Kelly.
Aye. I have seven votes in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
That's correct.
Very good. Ms. Pekerek, second of three for you here. This is an easement purchase agreement with the city of Leewood for a proposed pump station as part of the State Line Road Pump Stations and Force Main project. I appreciate your continued education on this. And could you remind us the amount of savings that we'll be able to see with this pump station in process as opposed to sending flow to Kansas City, Missouri?
Yes, absolutely. So, this is part of a three pump station project along state line, and that will save our ratepayers approximately $100 million over 20 years for directing that flow to Tomahawk and treating it ourselves versus having someone else treat it.
I appreciate that's a significant savings for our ratepayers. Commissioner Fast?
Yes, I, I want to thank Susan and her staff. They had multiple meetings with the neighborhood, gathered input, came back to the neighborhood, really worked to accommodate the concerns of the neighbors. City councilors had concerns. So, this was not something JCW pushed through. They, they worked, they tried to work collaboratively, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, just one clarification. This pump station isn't actually saving us $100 million. It's, it's the whole system.
It's a piece in-
Just, just don't overstate that. Susan does a great job, but one pump station is not the game. We had a few more investments. But the question in particular to this item, how do we know this is a fair price for this property?
Thank you for your question, Commissioner. So, as part of, you know, identifying sites to, for these pump stations that we're discussing, this particular pump station, this site is really the best site. It is the place where we can intercept the most flow and direct it back, which the more flow we can intercept and direct back, then the more dollars we can save. And so, as part of that process, our legal department then works with the property owner to negotiate a price for us to purchase that. This, again, this site is the site where we can intercept that flow. The property owner agreed with locating our pump station at the site, and the city and the residents, as was referenced by Commissioner Fast, were agreeable to locating that site, or locating the pump station here as well.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you, Commissioner Ashcraft. I didn't want to be providing any misinformation, and so, I'll try to contain my excitement a little bit. But this is a key intercept site in the State Line Road Pump Station Force Main project, and so, an important link in the chain. And again, I think just a recognition to Susan Pekerek and to Erin and the entire wastewater team is always warranted.
Well, if every pump station saved $100 million, we'd have one in every neighborhood.
We'd have a lot of pump stations. That's absolutely true.
Let's do a few more.
Any further questions, or we'll have Commissioner Fast provide the motion.
I move the board to approve to execute an easement purchase agreement in the amount of $309,020 for the acquisition of easements within the city of Leewood for a proposed pump station as a part of the State Line Road Pump Stations and Main Project, LWC-Contract Six.
Myers, second. Moved by Commissioner Fast and seconded by Commissioner Myers. Seeing no further questions or comments, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand?
Allenbrand, aye.
And Chairman Kelly.
Aye. Have seven votes in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
That's correct.
Thank you very much. The purchase agreement is approved. And finally, for Ms. Pekerek, this is an agreement with KNW Underground for fiber optic lines through the Nelson Wastewater Treatment Facility. Ms. Pekerek?
Thank you, Chairman. Susan Pekerek, again with wastewater. Again, this project was included in our fiscal year 2023 budget. This fiber, fiber connects the Nelson facility, which you see here outlined in the yellow border, to the county's network. As part of the reconstruction of the Nelson facility, the existing fiber will need to be relocated. This fiber also connects other public entities for which the Johnson County DTI Department provides support. The city of Olathe procured a term and supply contract with KNW Underground, and it includes services of this type. And our Johnson County purchasing procedures allow us to utilize other governmental contracts. And so, this request is for, to authorize the general manager for wastewater to execute an agreement with KNW for $175,000. The map you see here, the lines you see in green are the new fiber. So, we'll be able to connect our, our existing Turkey Creek pump station to the network as well through this project, as well as then the red lines are the existing fiber. And you see the, the red lines connecting then city of Mission and city of Roland Park and Johnson County Public Works facilities as well.
Thank you, Ms. Pekerek. Another important infrastructure project for the northeast Johnson County here. And I appreciate that, given the new layout, the Nelson, that this is necessary to make sure that we connect all portions of that plant, the pump station, and that this can continue to connect to important community assets like the Roland Park Community Center, where JCPRD plays a central role. Understand Commissioner Ashcraft's hesitation with term and supply contracts, especially when it's with the city of Olathe.
Especially?
I'm sorry, I'm anticipating here, but, no, but I, I think it, it looks in order, but I'll invite my colleagues to chime in. Commissioner Fast?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I was on the city council at this time, and we went to Johnson County waste system, and what a huge difference this has made for the library, for a sports dorm, for the sports dome, the community center. It was this very poor internet connection. And so, really appreciate, I mean, that was thinking out of a box moment at that time, working with Johnson County. And, and these entities do pay. So, I just wanted to say, the county doesn't provide this free. All the entities do pay for this service. But I just, it really is a, an initiative that has made a difference for the residents in that area.
With, Commissioner Ashcraft, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Pekerek, KNW Underground was, as you said, selected through the term and supply contract. How do we know that that's the best value?
How do we know that, that that's the best value? I might ask the, we have someone here from our purchasing staff. They can speak to, the Johnson County was part of that procurement, and KNW provided prices as part of that contract. But I'm going to ask purchasing to provide a bigger explanation, excuse me.
Good morning, Commissioners Chair Lisa Robbins with Purchasing Division, speaking on behalf of Robin Lines today. This was a bid that we did. It's a true cooperative contract where we were a participating agency listed with Johnson County Community College as well. We received one bid, submitted, and the cost was in line with the previous contract. So, we did do some cost comparison, just to make sure that, you know, that was an accurate price provided.
Okay, thank you. Again, Mr. Chairman, as you've pointed out, I do have sensitivities to, especially when there's only one provider. But given the rather de minimis amount, I have no objections. Thank you.
And Ms. Pekerek, KNW has been working with you at the Tomahawk wastewater treatment facility as well, correct?
That is correct.
And you've been satisfied with their work out there?
Yes, we have.
Commissioner Fast, did you want to make the motion on this one?
Oh, yep.
Oh.
Well, I think Janay was-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm glad to.
I would like to.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to authorize the wastewater general manager to execute an agreement with KNW Underground, Inc., to install fiber optic lines through the Nelson Wastewater Treatment Facility in an amount not to exceed $175,000 per the city of Olathe Agreement Number 21-0102.
Allenbrand, second.
So, moved by Commissioner Hanslick and seconded by Commissioner Allenbrand. Seeing no further questions, then invite the clerk to take the roll, please.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand?
Allenbrand, aye.
And Chairman Kelly.
Aye. Have seven votes in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
That's correct.
Thank you very much for the trilogy, Ms. Pekerek. Next, I'd invite Tony Barron to discuss a contract with Phillips Site Work for paving repairs and replacement. This is phase one at the Sunset Office Building. Mr. Barron, welcome back. Mr. Barron, welcome back.
Thank you, Chairman Kelly. I just have one bit of information, and we did, had a question from Commissioners last week to validate the delta on the opinion of probable cost and the actual cost. Just want to let you know that we did validate that, and we feel comfortable with that delta moving forward. I stand for any questions.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Barron, thank you for that summary. Just, can you elaborate a little bit? I mean, it appears that all of the bids were under the probable cost, and the awarding recommendation is significantly under. Usually it goes the other way around. Usually staff stands up there and says, well, supply chain, da-da-da-da-da. What, what did you do right?
Well, I hope we do a lot of things right, but.
Fair enough.
I'll elaborate on this one. So what we did here is our opinion of probable cost. We identified two line items on this particular paving bid. The demo and the curb, curb and pavement cost were two line items that our opinion of probable cost were higher than the actual, actual bids themselves. And so with the demo, we did realize a difference of approximately $40,000 less than what we anticipated. And on the curb and pavement, the actual product itself, this particular company is going to set up an onsite concrete, mix their own concrete onsite, which saves cost, obviously, in transportation and handling it with another company. This concrete will, will be tested and held to the standards that we hold all of our projects to. So those are the two significant line items where we did save cost on this particular project.
Thank you. And not to anticipate coming features, but we'll see kind of the other end of concrete speculation on the next item. And it's just been a weird time with concrete estimations, especially given capacity, equipment availability, et cetera. And that's something that we've common, that has been commonly seen in public works departments throughout the region in the last years. Drew?
Yes, that is true. The availability of, we've seen a lot of numbers that are all over the place when it comes to, like demolition is a great example, manpower. Manpower is an issue on, on whether they're going to have the manpower or not, which has led to a fluctuation in those costs. Concrete is obviously on the rise, and availability of drivers is a, is a big deal right now.
All right. Not seeing any other questions, is there a motion? Commissioner Hanslick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to authorize a contract with Phillips Site Work, Inc., for the Sunset paving repairs and replacement Phase One project at the Sunset Drive Office Building, located at 11811 South Sunset Drive, Olathe, Kansas, 66061, in the amount of $142,307.15 per I F B 2023-014.
Myers.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hanslick and seconded by Commissioner Allen Brand, right in front of Commissioner Myers. Seeing no other questions, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
And Chairman Kelly.
I have seven votes in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
That's correct.
Very good. And Mr. Barron, the other end of the coin when it comes to concrete projects, this one is the Northeast Office Paving Repairs and Replacement Phase One, and a proposed contract with R and R Concrete. Any further report you'd like to provide?
Yes, just, we did reach out on this one also, as far as talking with our consultant, Phelps Engineering. And we, we were concerned about the difference in probable cost, and we identified line items pertaining to that. And the two line items goes back to demo, similar to the, the previous paving project, was a significant miss in its, in general conditions also. So what we did is we asked them, they are, have been a trusted partner of ours, we've used them historically for, for several years, and we have a, a good relationship with them. And I think we feel, and they feel that they just missed on that number as far as how we were so far off on that. If you take the difference in, in their, in their difference in probable cost, yes, we are, we are very close to the ballpark with the numbers that come with that particular line item. It gets us a little bit closer to the delta. So anyway, just wanted to make that statement, and I stand for questions.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Barron, thank you for that summary. A question about procedure, then. Does your staff have a mechanism in place to, over time, assess the, for lack of a better term, accuracy of these probable cost estimates? Because for me, as a commissioner, it's very important to have that third-party kind of review. And there are one-offs, and I'm not being critical, but I just wanted to understand, do you assess that, or monitor that, and, and act on it as needed? And I'm not saying it's needed here, but just generally.
I will speak a little bit to past practice with me as a director, and I'll speak a little bit to my three months here in this role. So I did ask our, our staff, yes, how do we validate this? And we were very fortunate to have a dedicated, you know, 12 project managers in our department, along with other individuals who have experience in the field, both with government and outside of government. And then we compared to other projects, would be our goal is to, we're, for instance, we're paying paving price of, of X amount on this project. How does it compare to what we did last year at this time or three months ago? We do have an internal checks and balances. We had done the same, and what my expectation will be moving forward is also to, to dig in a little bit deeper on, on market trends, which I know our staff is following. You know, what is the price of concrete this year? What is availability of drivers, and how does that go? And then as far as the third-party consultant, just meeting with them on a regular basis, if we continue to have these one-offs, we need to ask those questions of, why are we missing, and, and at what point can we correct that? And are we looking at the same data?
Very good. And, and one follow-on, Phillips Site Work, we, we've got a history of work with them, and you're satisfied with their capacity to, to meet these prices?
Yes, we validated them, they're beginning to work with us on these paving projects, plus they have another project with us outside of paving, and yes, we are.
All right. Is there a motion on this one? Go ahead, Commissioner Hanslick, thank you.
Thank you. I move to authorize a contract with R and R Concrete, Inc., for the Northeast Office Paving Repairs and Replacement Phase One project, located at 6000 Lamar Avenue, Shawnee Mission, Kansas, 66202, in the amount not to exceed $524,580 per I F B 2023-013.
Allen Brand, second.
Moved by Commissioner Hanslick, seconded by Commissioner Allen Brand. Any further questions or comments? I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
And Chairman Kelly.
I have seven votes in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
That's correct.
Okay. There's been a request for a break. We have two more items on this business session. And apparently, an emphatic agreement for this request for a break.
I have never seen that excited.
Nor have I. So we'll take a brief five minutes, and then we'll finish up.
Thank you, Linda.
And, and five. We're at a good clip, let's continue it back here at 11:11. Thanks for your willingness, though. Okay, we are back on the record, and here with us is Brent Christensen to discuss Resolution Number 049-23, and this is the Revised Human Resource Policy Number 105. Mr. Christensen, we appreciate your report last week. Anything further you'd like to add on this one?
No, just, the updated language is related to a federal compliance in regards to the Pregnant Workers Fairness Act. It becomes effective June 27th. And so while the county always follows the federal and state laws, by updating our H R policy, allows our employees a convenience to know how the county will respond to questions related to equal opportunity in employment. And without any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioner O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to point out, and, and I'm very appreciative of, under religion, it includes all aspects of religious observance and practice, as well as moral or ethical beliefs sincerely held with the strength of traditional religious views. I, I really appreciate that is part of, of this, and I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hanslick.
I'm glad to make the motion.
Go ahead.
I move that the board approve Resolution Number 049-23, adopting Revised Human Resource Policy 105 pertaining to equal, equal opportunity in employment, in the form and substance reflected in the policy attached thereto, to be effective June 22nd, 2023, and that such revised policy supersede and replace the policy of the same number now in effect.
Allen Brand, second.
Moved by Commissioner Hanslick and seconded by Commissioner Allen Brand. Further questions or comment, Commissioner Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Christensen, you, you may have said this, and I was distracted trying to read my notes, but this appears to be basically procedural to put us in compliance with federal laws. Is that what you said?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, or Commissioner Hanslick?
Yes, I just, I just want to use this opportunity to, to point out how far we have come in accommodating pregnant workers. When I, when I was pregnant with my first child, I actually ended up having to quit work because the, the policies at that time did not accommodate some of the things I needed. And I'm, so I'm very happy that we are making that kind of progress, and very happy to support this, this motion.
Sorry, Commissioner O'Hara?
Commissioner Hanslick, this is one issue that we agree on, and I had the exact same experience when I was pregnant with my first child. I was told that I had to quit because I was pregnant.
If I might, I, I wasn't told I had to quit, but I was told I, I had a very limited amount of maternity leave, and medically, it was not going to work, so.
I was told I had to leave.
I believe it, but thank goodness, things have changed.
All right. Any further comments or questions on the motion? If not, we'll call the roll.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
And Chairman Kelly.
I have seven votes in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
That's correct.
Very good. Resolution passes, and on to Resolution Number 050-23. Again, update, adopting revised human resource policies pertaining to certain employee benefits. Mr. Christensen, any further report?
Just again, that from last week, Policy 504 and 505 is house keying items, in which the language included E M Ts in the sick and vacation leave policies. Policy 503 and 508 is removing introductory periods so that employees can submit for educational reimbursement, as well as receive supplemental work comp benefits. Additionally, I'm requesting educational reimbursement limits to move from 3,500 to 4,000 per year for an employee. I am not requesting an increase in the budget authority, it still stays at 300,000. And additionally, I'm not sure if I remember, I said this last week, on 508, on workers comp, we added a section related to retaliation for good faith reporting of workplace injuries.
Thank you very much, Mr. Christensen. I'm supportive of revising these policies, continues along the trend of providing a rewarding work environment for the staff members here in Johnson County, and I feel it's totally appropriate. Commissioner Allen Brand?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Christensen, I just, I know that you're.
Mr. Christensen, I know that you're interim, and you're doing a great job. I just wanted to let you know. I appreciate it. It's always good to help jump in.
Interim.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Commissioner Allen Brand, if he does too good of a job, then the county manager may remove the interim, and that may or may not be a blessing.
I don't think so.
Yes. Mr. Christensen, I'm sorry we didn't get a chance to visit yesterday, but I wanted to ask, and I've had this conversation with your predecessor or former HR director and actually the former, former HR director, because back in, I think it was September of 2019, and I know it was a different world, we provided some enhancements to benefits package, I think it was 501 and 509. And one of the questions I posed then was, how will that impact recruitment and retention practices, and how do we measure that? I would like to encourage you to incorporate at least 508 into that, because I think that will have an impact, or arguably would have an impact on employee retention and our competitiveness, if that's the right word with the market. So we don't need to go into it now, but.
Well, just one thing. So I'm sorry, I had to pick between you and the sheriff, and how it went.
I would always pick the sheriff, too.
But I was provided input from your question, and obviously, I mean, I talked about this at the February 23, Committee of the Hole, and we did the company benefit survey of how things are weighted. And in regards to, you look at from employee benefits perspective, you look from the output, but you also look from a hopefully ROI perspective as well. But from an output perspective, you're saying, looking at staff turnover, you're looking at absentee statistics, and you're looking at employee satisfaction surveys, which we haven't had a benefits employee engagement survey in a long time, and due to things that's happened in the last few years. But that's on the block for our wellness and benefits advisory committee to start working on so that we can do that here in the upcoming year. But I do want to share that I have some statistics for you, because it wasn't necessarily 501 and 509, it was the whole package of 501 through 509 that we changed. And really, the biggest changes was in our leave, and where, in particular, our sick leave, and that we, before, there was no cap on sick leave. We capped sick leave as of 1-1 of 2020, and we said, any new hires come in, you have to be here for five years from like a vesting perspective to receive a sick time payout. We also capped everybody at that particular time in regards to what you have. And so I have some of those figures, and so from a, through today, from 1-1 2020, we have just 1.3 million actual or deferred savings in just that work together. And we have larger savings on the vacation side, but if you recall during COVID, we allowed people to go over it, and that was around a million dollars. And so, kind of, you know, I developed a lot of this stuff back in 2018, 2019, when going through the benefit changes, and, you know, the outlook is that it will, over the next 20 years, it will be easy 20-plus million dollars in deferred savings because we're not paying those out or having that liability on our books.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Faust.
Can you remind me again, our current educational reimbursement, and then how this is changing?
So our current is that the limit is $3,500, and I'm asking to go to 4,000. I'm also saying that anybody that comes in is that they don't have to wait for six or eight or nine months, is that, you know, if a department needs somebody that wants to do a certification to help them with their job, is that they can do that immediately, and they just need to complete their six months of employment before they get reimbursed.
But you run out very quickly, correct? That we have a budgeted amount, and only so many people, not everybody can access that, isn't that correct?
We do allocations three times a year. The issue is, is that I am not spending enough right now, because a lot of times people, if, are leaving. For the last three years, I have not hit that $300,000, and because what we have approved, they have left, and then the people that are still here, I can't give them any additional dollars, even though I have some budget authority left over. And that's what I'm at least trying to accomplish, as well as trying to promote more folks to go through our educational reimbursement process.
Chairman.
This is Postoc Ferguson.
This may be obvious to the Board by now, but although Brent is our interim HR Director and has only been that for a short time, he has been over benefits for a long time, so that might be obvious by now, but I just wanted to clarify that for Commissioners.
Commissioner Hanslick.
I'd be glad to make the motion, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
I move that the Board approve Resolution Number 050-23, adopting revised, excuse me, human resource policies 503, 504, 505, and 508 pertaining to certain employee benefits in the form and substance reflected in the attached policies thereto to be effective June 22, 2023, and that such revised policies supersede and replace the human resources policies of the same numbers now in effect.
Allen Brand, second.
Moved by Commissioner Hanslick and seconded by Commissioner Allen Brand. Seeing no other questions, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
And Chairman Kelly.
Aye, have seven votes in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
That's correct.
Okay. I am going to ask, unless there's a substantive objection, that we take up our executive session now, and I'm going to ask that, and I'm going to make that motion. So with that, I move the Board recess its open meaning to convene an executive session at 11:27 a.m. for a total period of 10 minutes for the purpose of discussing preliminary matters of property acquisition and to protect the privacy of negotiations, and to reconvene an open session in this room at approximately 11:37 a.m. or as soon thereafter as this executive session may end.
Allen Brand, second.
So moved by myself, seconded by Allen Brand. Will the clerk call the roll?
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
And Chairman Kelly.
Aye. Seven votes in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
That's correct.
Okay, we'll be back in approximately 10 minutes. Thank you all very much for your patience.
Okay. We'll be back in approximately 10 minutes. Thank you all very much for your patience.
Is anybody else?
When you're ready. Okay, we are back on the record. At this time, we have a motion from Commissioner Hanslick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move the board to authorize the chair to execute a broker agreement between the Board of County Commissioners of Johnson County, Kansas, and Highlands Real Estate LLC for the purchase of a commercial property.
Allen Brand, second.
Moved by Commissioner Hanslick, seconded by Commissioner Allen Brand. Invite the clerk to call the roll, please.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
No.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
No.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
And Chairman Kelly.
Yes. I have five votes in favor and two against. Is that consistent with your count?
That's correct.
All right, very good. On to reports and communications. First, from our county manager, Ms. Post Oak Ferguson.
Chairman, I have one item today, and it's a notice of public hearing. The city of Gardner notified us they will be conducting a public hearing on Monday, July 17th at 7:00 PM. The public hearing pertains to the adoption of RHID plan and the designation of RHID. The project plan is Grand Street Reinvestment Housing incentive district within the city of Gardner. A copy of the notice and public hearing, along with the resolution, is attached. And I'll see if there's questions. Concludes my report.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Post Oak Ferguson, was there a cost-benefit analysis, particularly as it pertains to Johnson County? I didn't see it.
I did not see one either, but I attached the information that we do have.
Very good. And it looks like this is housing designated for senior living, different capacities. Do we know if this is affordable housing or subsidized housing? Do we have any idea what?
I don't have information beyond what's in the packet that I gave you.
Okay. Well, Mr. Chairman, these RHIDs, RHRIDS, RIDs, whatever the acronym is pronounced, they're growing in prevalence and popularity, and I understand the mechanism. But, Mr. Chairman, I again would appeal to this board, I would encourage us to develop a policy and communicate with our city partners about the use of these mechanisms and how it might impact us, so that they know what that impact is and can consider it when they go forward. This is just, I think, the third of probably many that we'll see over the years. And without that policy, as the previous chairman once said, if you're not at the table, you're on the table. And that's a concern.
Thank you, Commissioner Ashcraft. Commissioner O'Hara?
Thank you. I concur with Commissioner Ashcraft. And it's obvious that when you give tax incentives, which this will have as significant tax abatement, and I believe that those are for 20 years, that the cost of services for this will be spread out on the shoulders of the existing tax base. We continue to erode our tax base with these types of incentives. And I just want to remind the commission that we are now diverting $91 million as of 2022 with tax increment finance districts and industrial revenue bonds. And with 20% of the tax levy approximately that is county, that is approximately $18 million, which is over 1 mil, about 1.3 mils, that is the cost to the county, not including parks and rec. Thank you.
I'll just continue to remind us, and thank you to both of you for your points, that when you look at incentives, look at the whole situation concerning the property, whether it was even having any tax impact or any positive tax impact on the county or the taxing jurisdictions beforehand, or if it was maybe even an albatross that was costing the jurisdictions money and not producing any tax revenue whatsoever. So please take a holistic approach when you're looking at tax incentives. And if you want to talk about this particular project, the public hearing is on July 17th. Commissioner Myers?
I was going to ask, Mr. Chairman, but this item won't come back to the commission, correct?
No.
No.
All right. All right. Any further report?
No, sir.
Okay. We're going to move to Commissioner comments, starting, we'll go right to left. Commissioner O'Hara, why don't you go ahead?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay, we had nine folks speak at the public comment time. And again, we do not broadcast the public comments, unfortunately. And the folks that spoke today, Debbie Detmer, most of them were on not increasing property taxes through our budget. Debbie Detmer, Ben Hobert, John Anderson, Joe Leary. Joe Leary actually gave a really good talk about how the spending at the federal, state, and the local level has been the engine of inflation in the United States. Richard Hall was here talking about global warming and his support of solar in the West Gardner area. Steve Snitz, he was talking about how we needed to cut the increases to not increase property taxes, as was Galen Van Horn. Gary Morgan was talking about transparency. And Kathleen, and I did not get Kathleen's last name, she has been a teacher for eight years, and she was concerned about all the tax increases and that the money is, and she just wanted the public to know that the money is not getting to the classroom. And so, the other thing is that Tuesday afternoons, I have the privilege of going to the Juvenile Detention Center for Bible study with Ron Stiles. That continues to be just a wonderful experience. And continuation of physical fitness, I did a 23-mile bike ride Saturday, and it was a glorious day. Thank you.
Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Chair. Yesterday, I was able to attend with several other commissioners the United Community Services Human Service Summit. It was an excellent morning. Its focus was on affordable housing and homelessness. And again, it was a very, very good, and it was a packed house. The summit was extremely full with a lot of interested people.
Commissioner Hanslick?
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's been a busy week for this District 4 commissioner. Last Saturday, I had the privilege of participating in the Juneteenth march and rally with the advocacy and awareness group of Johnson County, where our illustrious chair also spoke. And on Monday, of course, we had the county's Juneteenth celebration, which was outstanding. I heard many, many compliments, and especially, there was appreciation for the various tables that the various county departments made available with information. And it was very well done. So kudos to Jody and her staff and everyone that put that together. It was great. Then Tuesday, I attended the Mark Total Transportation Policy Council, where I was asked, and it's not really an election, but I was asked to assume the position of the Kansas Vice Chair for that TTPC. So I look forward to serving in that capacity. That evening, I spoke at the Bel Air Homeowners Association. Lots of great questions. I always enjoy that. And then yesterday, attended the UCS Human Service Summit. And then tomorrow, we have the Regional Housing Partnership Strategy Committee down at the Mark Building. So that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Hanslick. Commissioner Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend the UCS Summit. I've attended that many times over the years, but the last week or so has been consumed by a number of residents related to the 4H4 development. Have had many very good conversations, and I think they have come to understand that the potential project now is residing with the city of Alatha and their processes as they go forward. But I appreciate everyone who reached out to me. I tried to call everyone back. I got many people. If you still have questions, don't hesitate to call. Thank you.
Commissioner Allen Brand?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too had a lot of those emails and tried to return phone calls. And hopefully by this weekend, I'll get that done. I wanted just to show that the Commission on Aging, I stay socially engaged by, they started this program. So if you want one, I'd be more than happy to get it to you. Also, I want to point out that our own Peg Trent was on the front cover of the Overland Park Chamber as a graduate. I was kind of questioning that she actually graduated. But she did, so.
It's going to happen in a few moments. Because it's over the lunch hour.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought she, well, darn. Anyway, I too want to thank the staff, everybody involved, the volunteers that came to Juneteenth, to have the different booths set up. The band was just absolutely unbelievable. There was lots of people participating, all age group. You know, it was a great event. And I think that we need to buy Jody and her team some roller skates. And then also, I attended that night, I went to an event in DeSoto and spoke to a group of people in DeSoto about housing needs. I also attended the UCS Human Service Summit. It was very well done. And it was, you're right. It was a packed house. I also want to thank Julie Brewer for her service to UCS. She's retiring, and I appreciate everything that she's doing. And then, on the last note, Stan Holm, the past CEO of Alatha Medical Center, is now taking a, he's going to be, in fact, they're probably leaving right now to go to Arizona. So they're going back to your neck of the woods, to his neck of the woods, and he's going to be overseeing a hospital down there. And he wants to wish well to everyone. So, thank you.
Commissioner Ashcraft, quick interjection.
Forgive my interjection. You know, I failed to do this, and you mentioned it, and I just wanted to pile on. Jody Hanson and crew, and the organizing of the various city departments and the booths, that was very much a step up. That was a quality presentation. Thank Ms. Hanson. Thank you. But thank, I mean, I don't know if all departments were there, but it was a very good showing. It was colorful. It was well organized. People were prepared. Whoever did that, if you didn't do it, Ms. Hanson, make sure that your committee or whoever knows that it was very good.
Go ahead.
Because you guys have talked about it so much, I feel like I need to insert that there were a lot of county employees. But Vibe, our Vibe committee was very central to that, HR, and HR's sitting right here, and others. So next week, we plan to give you an update on numbers and things like that, so.
Also, our partners in the city of Lenexa. That was a great venue.
Commissioner Fast?
Yes. Attended the Juneteenth celebration in Overland Park on Saturday, and then evening at the Prairie Village. So it was wonderful to spend my Saturday learning and more about the historical nature of the event. Attended the UCS yesterday. As you said, it was a packed crowd. Just an excellent video that Megan Foreman had worked on, highlighting the housing work that we've done. And I hope we show that again. And so it was just really well done, that video. The other thing I've worked on for the past months is looking at our eviction process. I've met with our Chief Judge, our magistrate judge, McEntee, looking at alternatives to the tenant landlord process. What, how do we bring together our different departments to support landlords and tenants? Had brought together the different staff departments from aging, mental health, developmental services, housing, how, now that the state rental assistance program has come to end, how do we have more of a one-shot stop for the evictions process to support our courts? Our judicial system is going to be bringing forth an innovative program. I'm really excited about it, a pilot, and so you'll be hearing about that in the next month.
Very good. Excited to hear about it. I also attended many meetings and met with many people. But I wanted to also congratulate Peg Trent on her leadership graduation from the city of Overland Park. That's not a small undertaking. There are a lot of meetings, a lot of homework, believe it or not, that's involved.
Homework.
I mean, we're back in law school, right? But it is great to have folks like her. And Robin Symes is also graduating from a leadership program, I believe it's Leadership Shawnee. And.
Tim Wolfe.
Tim Wolfe? And I think Erin Witt was one of the programs this year as well. So we have, our employees of Johnson County are an important connection to our business community, and their leadership in taking the reins is much appreciated. So thank you all very much for that dedication. With that, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting, and we'll start agenda review. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.